Jesus Christ, in the council chamber while we seek our chapel. We welcome everybody to the city council meeting tonight. This is the first one for 2013 and we're going to start with an invocation here in just a few minutes. The invocation will be given by a member of our community. We open that up to any clergy or any religion that would like to do an invocation for us for the benefit of the council. And we ask that if you don't want to participate in the invocation, it is fine and it will have no effect on the matters that you've come here to discuss tonight. So with that, I'd like for everybody to stand and John Baker will give us the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll remain standing. I'm going to ask Dennis to come in, but before you do Dennis, I have a couple of things. This past holiday, we, Mr. Creech, lost his sister and we weren't able to do anything to, so I'd like for you to include the Creech family and
Thank you.
...in our prayer. Also today was the funeral for Fran McGlaughlin. Fran served two years as a city council person and two terms on the school board and she was buried today at the age of 93. So I'd like for every member of both their families in your prayer tonight.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to be in your presence tonight. Lord, we ask that you be with the McGlaughlin family, Lord, that you touch them and give them strength, Father, through this difficult time. Lord, we ask that you let them know that your hand is upon them, that they can seek you and ask for that help. Lord, we ask that you be with the Creech family, Lord, that you also give them strength, Lord, that you will continue to guide them and direct them, Father. Lord, we know that around this time and any time, it is hard to lose loved ones, Lord, and we just ask that you will wrap your arms around them and help them through. Lord, and we ask tonight that you be with the council members, that you will give them the wisdom and knowledge that they will need to be about the city's business. Continue to guide them also, in Jesus' name. Amen.
First item of business is they'll now shut the ringers off and so we're going to be ringing going on. I've been checking, I think I have it off and then I sometimes, then we'll have a roll call.
Councilwoman Rish?
Present.
Councilwoman Weber?
Present.
Councilwoman Chomol?
Present.
Councilwoman Navi?
Present.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilwoman Creech?
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Present.
Let the record show that all council present tonight and we have a court where they can do business. The reading of the minutes of the last council meeting.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion. We pass the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion to the council. We passed the minutes as they were presented in the packets. Any additions or corrections? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. If it's okay with the council, I've been asked to deviate from the agenda. We have some people that drove from Indianapolis to come down and talk to us and we don't want them to have to drive down late at night. And then we have some people in our audience that are working hard to create jobs in Connerville and I don't want to make them sit here all night. So I'd like to take more precision first. David and you and your son would come up. We've been working with David for the last several years. He has started a, I want to say, an engineering plant or a custom plant where he has employed four full-time people and he's expanding. He's bought a new piece of equipment for $100,000. He's asking for an abatement. The abatement committee met this afternoon and we went over and we voted unanimously to allow him to have a five-year abatement on the piece of equipment. I'm going to let you tell us what that piece of equipment does. Mr. Moore?
I'm going to veto that to my son.
Okay.
He's the operations manager and he's the one that makes the turns, so. It's actually an automated piece of turning machinery that'll, instead of doing everything manually, you do it by programming CNC and program the codes in and cut the part automatically for you. So I think that's a big step for us and we're excited about getting it.
It is. I keep thinking that one of these days, one of these young men, a local, graduated, lived here all his life, is going to be a Sammy Reagan Street, have seven or eight hundred, Mr. Seaver agrees with me, seven or eight hundred employees. I may not like to see it, but this is how you start. You start and grow and we're going to help him grow. So I'm asking you tonight, if you will, to give him a five-year abatement on his piece of the machinery.
Would you like a motion on that?
I would.
I would like to make that motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. You figure out who did it. And I think just to show our support, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chomol?
Yes.
Councilwoman Navi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
I think this shows you the support you have in this community. We want you to grow and grow and grow and I've watched you. You are growing and we really do appreciate your business.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. Now, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
We certainly appreciate the confidence that you've given us, Mayor and the council as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Dave.
Okay. Staying in line with that, before we get into the boring business, I'll ask Mr. Seaver and the man from Pitten Bowls, I can't remember his first name.
Dennis Otten.
Dennis, come on up. You know, one time I had hair look just like that. Yep.
Have you? Yeah.
There are pictures in here.
Sometime ago, I began talking with these two gentlemen. We have a bond issue over at the utility, it's called a 2005 water bond and we begin to talk and I had them do some figuring and they've come up with some good figures, I think. They're going to give the figures to you and then I'm going to ask you to pass this ordinance that would allow us to start refinancing this bond. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Let me just give a very brief introduction and try to tie some of these discussions together. If you recall, and I'm sure you probably don't, back, was it last summer? When we were talking about water and sewer rate increases?
Yes.
Okay. I'm in a j-.
Last May, exactly.
Good memory. I said, and it may have come across as often, but I did say, if we're all around at the time, there's an opportunity to refund the water bonds, but the bonds aren't callable until July 1st of this year. So we're here tonight with plenty of time to try to get all this accomplished. There's approximately $3.6 million worth of principal amount left on the 2005 Waterworks bonds. They pay interest currently at a rate of about 4.8%. The final maturity is in 2025, which would be approximately 12 years from now. And we believe that by refunding them, you can reduce the rate to about 2.25%, which would save over the life of the bonds about present value of about half a million dollars, about $50,000 to $60,000 a year. So I wish we had these transactions to do for the city all the time.
These are net figures he's giving.
Yeah, these are all net figures, net of all the costs and expenses and money transferred, but just trying to get to the bottom line. So there's a timetable put together, I don't know if you brought that with you, but the timetable would have the city selling the refunding bonds in the late spring, early summer. There's a 30-day call period, 30-day notice, advance notice required to call. I sound like an attorney, don't I, Dennis? The bonds are actually redeemable July 1st with a 30-day call. So back that up to June the 1st, meaning we need to be able to close on the refunding bonds and have the money in hand by now, later than the end of May, so that on or about June the 1st, that 30-day notice can be sent to call the bonds on July the 1st. If that makes sense to you, I credit you because that probably didn't make sense when it came out of my mouth, but in sum, we're looking at a bond sale in April or May to get all this accomplished. So there's plenty of time. There's no rush. There's no hurry. And if we see the market changing rapidly by going ahead and introducing this tonight and if you would be willing to pass it the following meeting, if we see the market changing, meaning if the interest rates are starting to go up very quickly, that does give us the opportunity and the legal basis to jump into the market and try to get it done very quickly.
John, would there be any reason to wait?
Well, the bonds can't be called until July the 1st. So if you, let's say you sell the bonds in February, from February until July the 1st, you're paying interest on both bond issues. So to time it out, it makes a lot of sense to time it out so that you're going to have that 30-day call period and you can't get away from that. But to maximize those savings and to eliminate that duplicity of interest expense, it makes a lot of sense to try to time the sale to occur sometime in the month of May-ish, all of the things being equal and assuming interest rates don't change between now and then. And then someone's going to ask me, so I'll head you off to the past, what are interest rates going to do over the next few months? I don't know. The Federal Reserve has made a pledge to continue to buy to do its mechanics to try to hold interest rates at or near their current levels for the, through 2014? Forever. Yeah. So. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So absent something that we don't know about at the moment, I wouldn't anticipate interest rates changing markedly between now and May, but we'll look back and if something happens, you can say that I was silly for saying that. But I'm not aware of any reason to hurry. There's plenty of time for everyone to start and how to take a very ratable pace, do this cautiously and slowly, and so get it done in plenty of time.
John, the purchases of these bonds in 2005 promised 4.8%. Do they automatically sell these bonds this year and so they mature?
They don't actually mature, but they can be called in early.
Okay.
And Fran, they don't have any say. That was one of the rights that they gave the city 10 years ago when they bought the bonds. They bought the bonds knowing that if interest rates changed, the bonds could be called in early.
I see.
And the first window of opportunity to call in the bonds early just happens to be July 1st of this year.
Can you do a quick explanation on what do you mean by selling and refunding and who actually bought these bonds?
Okay, put it out on the table there, so go slow. I'll try to answer everything again. Who bought the bonds originally? The 2005 bonds, who bought them? They were sold through a competitive bidding process on the open market, meaning they were sold with a broker and it's sold to individuals and banks and I don't know who owns them.
As an investment sort of thing?
As an investment, right. You've got local brokers, I don't know if you have A.G. Edwards or Ed Jones and Everdy Jones and all those places. They would have helped sell the bonds, but ultimately the bonds are likely owned by a number of individuals in Connerville and around the state and Midwest. True, true, true. That was one question. Your next question?
Does that sound like a refunding? Yeah.
Refunding, it's just my silly technical talk for refinancing. Refinancing. So it's just like any other refinancing you would do on your mortgage or anything else, except some of the terms and concepts are different. You're going to go out and you're going to sell new bonds, you're going to take the proceeds of the new bond and use those to pay off the old bonds.
And then over the years, we're going to pay a lesser interest rate, which makes our net profit or our net savings of about $50,000. He said $50,000 to $60,000, but we really figured about $50,000 a year.
And we're not changing the payment dates or anything like that all the time? No. Nothing aggressive, nothing fancy. We're keeping everything, we're keeping everything as same as we can. It's really just an interest rate play to try to take advantage of the low interest rates.
We have done this on everything that we have over the last five years and I'm about to ask John tonight, we need to look at the pool bond.
Yes, we do. In fact, we had a brief discussion in the hallway. Those bonds are callable January 1st of 2014. So sometime yet this year, perhaps this fall, the city, assuming everything stays, interest rates stay as they are, the city should look to try to refinance those as well.
That will be our last one. We did the Miller Building and we did another sewer bond.
We've done all the bonds at the utilities. This is the last one.
Probably over the period of just what we've done is probably close to a million dollars.
In savings?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably. So I apologize if my presentation, have I get it?
You're good.
All right. So let me turn the verbal baton over to my colleague here, Dennis Otten, who's with Bose McKinnon. He's going to walk you through the adoption or the introduction of the bonds.
That's this one you should have in the packet with the black ticket on it.
I'm Dennis Otten with Bose McKinnon Evans and we're a law firm and I do bond council services, so this is what I do, prepare bond ordinances and work on refinancing for folks like John all the time. In fact, we've done a lot of them just this past year. This big document you have in front of you, I won't go through it word for word, but essentially if you took the bond ordinance that you did in 2005, this is a very similar document except that instead of authorizing a project, it authorizes the refinancing of those old bonds. But the flow of funds all stays the same. You do have some 2010 bonds outstanding and this says that these new bonds are going to be on parity with those and that's something that John's firm will prepare a report to certify that. That just means that they're on a one-for-one level for purposes of payment in the dollars of the utilities.
They're both senior.
Both senior.
Like a first mortgage, second mortgage? They're both first mortgage equipments.
And really what this document is to contract with the bondholders. So it sets out all the flow of funds and their rights and remittances, which like I said, are very similar to what was done in 2005. And it also authorizes some of the financing documents, the escrow agreement, like John said, it'll be an escrow on this, a bond purchase or placement agreement that will be in effect when the bonds are sold and then something called a continuing disclosure agreement. If these bonds are sold through an underwriting process, you have continuing disclosure obligations and you may be aware of those, but you already have those on the old five bonds. But I'm happy to answer any questions. The parameters in here, the dollars, the maximum dollar amounts and interest rates, we've taken the information that UML provided us with and those have all been incorporated into this ordinance and I think you guys have a chance to look it over.
So parameters, that was the word you used and I'll ask a question before you do. Parameter just means not to exceed because we don't know here tonight what the final deal terms will be because you don't know when you get all the documents prepared, you get in the market, you talk to all the players and that's several months down the road. But we need, we've got this catch 22 where we need the legal authority from yourselves to get to the point where we can prepare the documents and get in the market. So to overcome that, the bond ordinance before you is drafted in parameters format. That's why it's not to exceed and no greater than and no later than, okay? All of which are broad parameters of the transaction that the ultimate deal will have to stay within. And that is extremely important.
County commissioners just did this with the courthouse and I was lucky enough to buy a little bit of the bond because they're usually tax-free, Indiana tax-free.
And these will be too.
Yeah. So they are attractive. Now, you're talking about selling these privately, aren't you?
Well, we're going to explore both options and do whatever was best for the city, but based upon the preliminary numbers, the numbers that look most attractive to us when we last looked at this in November was a private placement through an underwriter but with a one or two financial institutions.
So these can be considered tax-free municipal bonds, is that right?
Yes.
And we started out at $4,075,000?
On the original transaction from 2005?
Yes. And now we're down to $3,485,000?
Yes.
And I will tell you, maybe I shouldn't, but I will anyway, we actually have some of that money still in hand because we face, as you remember, the 29th Street project, we had to put two blocks of water line in, if you remember, the project up on.
We took water up to?
We took water up to.
The 58 acres.
The 58 acres. We used that money. So that money is there for water extension and we need that because there's from time to time. In fact, I just asked the water company tonight to look at a water extension when we come to expanding for economic development purposes. So it's not all on paper. I can't remember exactly. One question. It changes from time to time. But anyway, what I need tonight is for you to consider passing pending ordinance 2988. That's this big packet and we'll sign all the papers real quick while they're here.
I think the gentleman wanted to introduce the ordinance this evening as opposed to having it passed, is that correct?
Well, it's ultimately your call. If you feel comfortable, given what we said.
I introduced this ordinance at the last meeting.
All right.
I didn't introduce the ordinance, but I introduced the concept. If you all remember, I asked you permission to move forward with it. Do you all remember? So it's been introduced. But if you feel more comfortable to let it just sit over?
No, I don't. I was just talking to Mr. Otten earlier and I thought the plan was to introduce it this evening, but it has already been introduced and that's not necessary.
And I think if we're going to have it passed tonight, just as a technical matter, we'd like to have the rule suspended on the record since I don't know that.
That's what we would do.
Yeah, that this actual ordinance was here, but yeah, if you're comfortable with adopting it tonight, that's just one more step really in the process.
I don't want to pay these guys to come down here again.
Tell us how you feel.
I think it makes financial sense for the city, so I move the pending ordinance 2988 to pass on for free.
Second. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Oh, that's the reason I introduced it last time and I got their consent to move forward before I spent any money with you at all coming down here tonight, you know? Okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Is there any discussion more than what we've had here tonight?
Makes sense.
Okay, is there any discussion from anybody in the audience? It's an important issue. Okay. We'll have a roll call vote on pending ordinance 2988. We have a motion and a second.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Chomol?
Yes.
Councilman Navi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
You have passed that unanimously. You, if you'd like, we can suspend the rules tonight and move directly to third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I didn't get who made it. Gabe?
Second.
Mr. Creech? That they suspend the rules, so we have their pending ordinance 2988 on third and final reading. On suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye. Is there anybody opposing? None opposing, it gives us permission to move forward and to consider pending ordinance 2988 on third and final reading.
So moved.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion before we move to third and final reading? Non appearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilman Chomol?
Yes.
Councilman Navi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
You have passed that unanimously on third and final reading. You have adopted it and I've been fooling with it for about 60 days. I'm really undecided.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you all.
Give this way a few minutes, we'll give it to the back. This is a copy. You got to read it. Do you have the original?
I have an extra copy.
Okay.
There's a lot of places to ask.
Yeah, I can show you. There's about a million different places for signatures.
All right, we'll wait and do it later and.
I'll send you.
That'd be fun.
This is. You're a great person. You're just someone that. Well, you've got my email. I do. Okay, thanks. Good evening.
John, let me say a little bit about John. I always deal with, besides not having any hair, John was born and raised and he lived in DC, swam in the pool and what happens here, he gets a free trip down to his hometown.
See? The car knows the way to this day. I just point it at you and it goes there, what again?
We're always proud when you come down, John. And we're glad to have you.
Good to see you.
Keep me up. Now we want to look at that pool bond. Don't let me slip, okay? Okay.
Thanks again.
Thank you so much.
Bring it up next time.
This is not going to happen.
Now, let's go back to our, let's go back to our agenda. This is the night when we are mandated by state law to elect officers at the council meeting and so I would like to at this time to turn the gavel over to our council president who will conduct the elections. Don't hit this very hard.
I won't. I'll use my Coke Zero.
You want to use this?
Yeah, you can use that. Okay. All right, nomination, maybe the other end. Nomination's open for city council president?
Nominate Gary Weber.
Only if I get a pay increase. Okay.
He can double zero.
Nominations, anybody else?
You nominate Gary Weber? I second it.
I move the nomination to be closed.
Second.
Second? All in favor? Oh, no. So what do I do now? Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, fine. He'll accept it. I know him. Okay, city, for nominations for the vice president? Open.
Tom Creech.
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded. All in favor for Tom Creech?
The nomination to be closed.
Okay, Tom, will you accept it? You did. Okay. E9 advisory board, one-year appointment, one-year term, open for nominations?
Gary, who's on there?
Nancy Stevens, an all-nominator.
I'll second it.
Second. Anybody else? Nominations?
I move the nomination to be closed.
Nominations closed. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Nancy, thank you. The Fayette County Economic Development Board, one appointed by the city council, one-year term, open nominations?
You had appointed Miss Montgomery to finish up.
Yeah.
Mr. Creech or Mr. Jobsturm.
Yes.
And tonight would be for the full year.
I would nominate Debbie Montgomery.
I'll second.
All right, it's been seconded. Yes, seconded. Did. Any more nominations?
Nomination to be closed.
Nominations closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I forgot about that. Okay. Okay, there you go.
You're getting good things.
I didn't tell you that.
You're almost done.
Okay. Uh, nominations for Fayette County First Aid Unit, one appointment with the city council.
Who did we trick last year?
Fran Shomel was on there.
Oh, I think Fran did a good job.
Second it? I'll second that. Any other nominations? Nominations closed, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Fran. Tax Abatement Committee, city, I'm already on there and I love it. Redevelopment Commission, two appointments. Actually, Ron Collier would like to be reappointed, so.
I'd make that motion.
Make that motion?
Second.
Second? Any other nominations for this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And Mr. Barnes does not want to be reappointed, so do we have anyone else that would like to be on there or nomination?
Has anyone indicated an interest?
Who did?
We have nobody, you have to find somebody.
I have to find somebody?
Well, the council does, it's your.
Okay, I'll find somebody. Dave?
What?
You want to be on this? Okay. No, I'm just joking. So, does anybody have any ideas or do we, can we?
You don't have to appoint it tonight, but it's your appointment.
What does it do and when do they meet?
They have to meet once a year and they sell property and redevelop the city. They have a lot of authority.
Yeah, there's five members, I think, two by council and three by the executive branch, am I correct?
They're in the process.
Does anyone on council want that position?
Nobby, you look very interested.
I'm not so sure it can be the council.
You do?
I have a question with that mayor, I think because Larry Myers is a non-office holder, a citizen of the community, I think it has to be similar.
The only requirement on redevelopment, one member of the school board has to be a non-building member, but that's my appointment.
John, can we hold off till next meeting?
Yes.
I could have answered that.
I mean, we tabled one appointment for the redevelopment commission for next meeting.
Okay, nominations will be closed right now. So thank you very much, that was very nice. And I'll return the gavel to our senior mayor.
Senior.
I meant that as in senior frauds.
Well, I have a much easier project here. I'm appointing the airport board first and I'm gonna put Bob Stan on there. I checked with him, he's willing to serve. On the board of public works, I'm putting Fran Shomel, Mike Bishop, Jane Oakley, and Ronnie Coldiron. They're the people that are serving on there now and I'm putting them back on there. Annexation would be Connie, Gary, and Tom if they agree.
Let's all agree.
You all agree? Okay, Connie, okay. The cable ward would be Mel Deely, Yoda King, Fran Shomel, Joe Galway, myself by virtue of my office, Melissa, and Chris Craig. Community corrections, the mayor serves on that by virtue of the office. Community development, the mayor serves on that by virtue of the office. Guys, redevelopment commission, my appointments would be Joe Galway, Carol Hunter, and Gerald Holmes, and they all said yes, that's the three I put on that, you got one more to fill. Emergency nine-one-one advisory board member, I don't have anybody.
You did have David Joe.
He could still serve on there if you'd like to. You want to stay on there? Okay, Fayette County Alcoholic Beverage Board, George Morris is my appointment. Fayette County Economic Development is the mayor by virtue of the office. Finance committee, all members are appointed by the. Fran Shomel will be the chairman, Julie Greason, the mayor, Gabe Nobby, and Gary Weber. And I'll tell you the reason we do that is, number one, Julie knows the money. Gabe is willing to come and usually can come. Fran can get off during the day, that's why I asked him to chair that finance committee because he can come down here, he doesn't have a job. Tax Abatement Committee is made up of the council president, who now, of course, for the next year is Gary Weber, the mayor, Julie, Diana, who, community development, and as I said, Gary. The tourism committee, we could not get the, they have some resigned and some sort of partial terms, and we could not get the terms straightened out today. I have three appointments on that, county council has two, which makes a five-person board. I'm gonna wait until the next meeting to tell you because we could not figure out, some have resigned and people have gone in and they have term limits, they can only serve two terms, we couldn't get that straight. So with that, also, we have some appointments on the historic preservation and again, there we do not have the names and we'll have those next time.
Mr. Brown questioned, and I can't remember if it's council or mayor, Connie had fulfilled David's, as a member of the Sullivan District Board, do we have to redo that for this year, Julie?
I just assumed she'd stay on since she's only in one meeting.
Okay, I mean, that's fine.
I'd let the record show we have four.
Yes, we have.
And we had a meeting.
We had five people.
Because Julie threatened everybody. She threatened everybody, then you'd show up.
Huh?
Julie did.
Well, Julie did. Why didn't you think Connie was that mean?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So with that, we have our appointments made for this year, you've elected your officers, and we're good to go. Get all that in a minute?
Yep.
We just looked through that real quick. We got the refinancing done. I think the only thing left I've got, and it should be under old business, it's not, is the additional cost to the 4-H building, that's about what you're seeing, that's all we got left? Okay, it's, we are about three-fourths done with the 4-H building. And Mr. Bottomling, I asked him a month ago to come forth with the closest figures he could to finishing the thing out since we're scheduled to dedicate the thing on the fourth quarter. And I'll let Mike have the floor.
Is this the James Roberts Building?
Yes, it is.
It's not the 4-H building.
Yeah, some people call it 4-H, some call it James Roberts, it's really, I guess what I should have said is the James Roberts 4-H building. But it seems like older people know it by the 4-H building, but it is the James Roberts Building.
Well, a short recap, where we stand right now on the progress of the Roberts Building. Should have a handout that had the scope of work that still needs to be done, but right now the handicap ramp is completed, probably about ninety-five percent of the drywall is finished, about probably ninety-five percent of the painting is done, the lighting of the building is probably about ninety percent, the heating area is completed, about ninety-five percent of electricity is ran. Almost ninety percent basically because the two restrooms and kitchens hasn't been completed yet, and that's what we're kind of working on next. The scope of work that needs to be done, I don't know if you want to read through every one of these line items, but back in two thousand and twelve, the estimate of the project I brought to you guys was a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, two hundred and sixty-four. Council gave seventy-five thousand dollars to get the project started, then we needed a comeback this year to let you guys know what the difference is and what we need to complete the project. Right now, if you round it up, it's about sixty-two thousand dollars to complete the project.
Mike, before we get to this, I would like to commend, you know, Mike's just doing a super job with that wrestling team. I mean, that's really important.
Did they win?
They're just, they're on tear.
Are they pulling my lighthearters to truth?
No, they're doing a good job.
We're having a good year.
Yeah, they're having a great year.
Twenty-one and one.
Yeah, they're doing a good job, Mike. Now, back to this, Mike.
Oh, it's coming.
No, I just got a question. It was understanding that we could do the building for seventy-five and now you need sixty-two more, is that what you're saying?
Sixty-one.
No, it was, I don't think, I mean, you go back and look at the minutes, but, I mean, I got the paper that I gave to everybody, it was a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars to do the building. And I was given seventy-five to get started and see how far that would take us, then come back now and see what's the difference.
The council wanted to split it in two different years.
Where do we get the initial seventy-five?
Riverboat.
The whole seventy-five?
I think we thought that others were gonna come forward.
Yeah, 'cause I thought we were sure that seventy-five thousand would do it.
I don't think it was presented that way, Tom.
No, we knew that that would not do it, but we did go out and we raised money, we sold windows, how many windows are left to sell?
We have sold all the small windows and fourteen of the big windows, we have six of the big ones left. We're starting work on it now since Christmas and the holidays are over.
Each one of those windows we sold brought in five hundred dollars, two hundred and fifty on the.
So the small windows was two hundred dollars and the big windows was five hundred.
We've had some individual pledges, we've raised some money with some programs.
We got about three places that we're supposed to call this year.
So this number is lower than sixty-two thousand, or is that what we need?
No, that's what we need.
So then you spend above seventy-five thousand then?
Yes. Seventy-five is what the council. We'll have to come from riverboat.
And we don't get anything more from riverboat?
Right.
You could take this from tax money, but it's too early in the year to ask for an additional appropriation, it would be better to take it from riverboat and then ask for an additional appropriation for something else.
What kind of money did the, did the other, more, the bigger fundraisers bring in?
Windows was the biggest fundraiser.
Yeah, what was that, seven, is it ten thousand dollars?
About seventeen total.
Seventeen thousand, yeah. About twenty-two, add to windows and all the other stuff, about twenty-two thousand dollars.
So, my view is, is all the, all the money's been spoken for, it's on here?
Yes, we're at a dead stand still in the fact.
We spent everything we happened.
No, and the riverboat, yeah, that's the money there that's already.
There's a little bit spoken for, not a lot.
Okay.
About ten thousand.
I can't see, right now, taking half of our riverboat money to put in the, I mean, I'm all for spending riverboat money, but you know, we've spent a lot on equipment, you know, it's always there and we spend half of it, you know, I mean, a couple trunks is pretty much take the other half and then we're waiting till, so I'd be willing to.
Well, Gary, have you had a chance to see the building?
Oh, yeah.
What do you think?
It's nice.
Yeah, the transformation from July when I was up there during fair week is remarkable.
It's absolutely remarkable.
And I think Mike and all the city employees that have worked on it need to be commended.
Yeah, 'cause it costs double.
I look at it, so we have to continue on this building, if you guys are gonna board it up, let it sit there empty, deteriorate, and finally have to demolish it, you're gonna pay fifty to sixty thousand to demolish that because the cost is ten thousand, bring a house down. So it doesn't make sense to me to not complete, to complete the job.
I do have a question. We're looking at potentially buying a new ambulance, correct? Potentially, and we don't know where the grain is on that. And where would we get that money from?
We'd probably do a lease like we did with the.
And where would that money come from? What would it come from?
The general fund.
Comes from the general fund.
Besides, the county would pay half of that.
And then how much is typically around?
Hundred thirty thousand.
Fifty. So our share is about seventy-five.
I do have a little bit of a, I'm working on a project. While I was away this winter, I ran into a company that rebuilds six-oh diesel engines, about three a week. And I went and talked to this guy, very successful, and I'm gonna give this to Phil tomorrow. And he says the trick to it is, six-oh engines are the pits. He says they build these and they'll last two, three hundred thousand miles, but they build them with aftermarket products. This man says he's willing to talk to Phil about rebuilding our six-oh engine. Now, right now, it's running. And if I understand what happens, and this is way off the subject, but since you asked for start there, it gets, so the antifreeze runs down in the oil and then we, the injectors go out. These aftermarket products they have discovered, cure the project, cure it. So I am gonna work on that, I just didn't get a chance to today, but I ran into this by accident and then I went to see it myself. And they rebuild three of these six-os a week, it's a big diesel company. Now, I'm not advocating taking it to Michigan and having it rebuilt, I'm advocating maybe our mechanic, talk to these people, be able to find out where they're buying the parts to rebuild this engine. Because Dale and I have looked at putting a new Chevy engine in it, we've looked at trying to put a Ford engine in it, we've looked at trying to do everything with it, and it's not doable. Its value on the market today is probably thirty thousand dollars with that engine in it. And it's a great ambulance, it just has a bad engine. But when it comes to buying equipment, a normal city would be putting money in the budget and buying equipment.
We still have that.
Well, we're being, we're very cautious and we're not having to be in a financial bind because we know what we're doing. And the riverboat money is just extra money that we're given each year to spend for equipment, buildings. But I will remind you, the taxpayer deserves to get something back. The Miller Building, the park, the pavilion, Smalley Lake, the playgrounds we got around town is what we give back to the public that our own people with their own tax money can enjoy. And I'm like Fran, you guys, and not you two, not you and you two, but this council voted to restore that building. We have restored that building spending zero money on engineering. We have squeaked, we've gone out and found secondhand stuff to put in the kitchen. We have rebuilt doors and windows. We have every nickel that's been put in there, we've scrounged for, and if you go in there today, it's a beautiful building. It's, we've got requests already to use it. And it is also our bicentennial project that we intend to dedicate. I think if you took a survey of the people in Connersville, I would even go higher, but I'd say eighty percent of the people say complete the building. We have people in there constantly, every day, because the building's open and people are working in there.
Oh, we have, we have a visitor every day, someone walks in.
Mike, how many windows did you say we still need?
I was just six.
I'm sorry?
Six out of the twenty.
Then you must have a bunch you haven't put in yet, 'cause I've counted them.
We haven't put any in.
We've put no windows in yet.
You haven't put any ones in?
All the windows are done, Nancy, all the windows are built. They're all built and in the basement, we haven't put any windows. What he's saying is donations to pay for the window.
I understand that, but I want to know how much more money we need for the windows.
The windows are pretty much done, we're just trying to generate some revenue.
So if you generated not another dime, this is what you need to finish it with the windows that have not been purchased yet, that's in this money?
Yes.
Okay.
You're using the windows as a fundraiser?
Yes.
I mean, the windows are paid for, but they're trying to get more money because you can put your name on a plaque.
Right, and Fran, you changed my mind.
But I'm sorry to ask this a third time, but I thought there was gonna be other people that were donating a substantial amount, like to the tune of twenty, thirty, no?
Well, we have raised twenty-two thousand. Mother of purpose.
We haven't had anybody that's given us twenty-five thousand dollars.
I mean, you really can't let it sit there rot.
Well, you demolish that building, you got a hole in the ground, I mean, that doesn't make sense.
Well, if we put seventy-five grand in, we can't do that.
Yeah, I.
I mean, but, and.
It's just, I'm like the mayor, the people, talk to the people on the street, ask them what they think.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but I mean, they're not privy to the, to the money issues.
True.
And.
We spend sixty-one thousand, nine hundred, sixty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, and then some kind of an emergency need comes out, like in this case. But we won't have any money.
We had money in the general fund if we had to, didn't we?
We have money in the general fund.
I know we do, and I know, well, if the report's right, I know how much. But in the riverboat, this is gonna take a lot of it, and that's gonna keep going down.
Well, I think that's okay, I mean, that it keeps going down because we're using it. I mean, it does no good sitting there, I mean, it does no good at all sitting there. And I guess.
It's spent from it, it hasn't just sat there.
Well, no, but I mean, right now, we have a hundred and forty-six thousand in there, some of it's allocated, but if this is what we want to allocate it for and it takes most, half of it, then that's what it's for. I mean, that is what it's for, and you know, you can sit there and say we'll wait for a rainy day, but we're gonna get some more rainy day money sometime, August, and we'll still have half of it left and that project will be completed. And that's what the money's for, so I mean, yeah, you're right, Fran, we can't let it sit there and get seventy-five thousand and then we can't finish the stupid thing, that's embar, that's stupid.
If you're gonna pay to tear it down, you're looking at a lot of money because demolition doesn't come cheap.
No, I mean.
Is there any way to scale it back a little bit? Do you have to have a kitchen to open? You have to have a restroom.
This is just a warming kitchen, very small. It's, so caterers can go in there and prepare their stuff and put it out on tables is basically what it is.
So it's not a big fancy thing?
No.
So eight thousand dollars is a used kitchen?
Yeah, you're talking an ice machine, we're talking a commercial, still a commercial refrigerator.
It's gonna, it's gonna meet state regulations, so that, I mean.
Right, has to be accessible, handicap accessible.
Mike, there is a need for another building in there, aren't there?
Oh, yeah, we get requests all the time, is it open yet, is it open yet?
I mean, and the rates are, we reviewed those, board of works approved them last time.
I think we have a prom called, they said that they'd like to do the prom in there next year.
Mill Run?
I had a request today, they wanted to have a banquet in there on April twelfth, and I, I had a request today, they wanted to have a banquet in there on April twelfth, and I said, oh, I don't know if we can do April twelfth, you know?
But the idea is that if we would've, if we said we're gonna, you know, restore the building, if we had restored it without our own people, we'd be triple the money right now, wouldn't we?
Give me a half million dollars plus a hundred thousand in engineering.
Since your boys have done a great job.
So I mean, yeah, it's silly not to, not to go after it.
Do you remember the meeting we had, it wasn't a council meeting? And it was my understanding that it was said seventy-five thousand dollars, we'll complete the building. It won't be a Cadillac, but we can get it completed, you remember that?
I don't remember, you know, I'm gonna be honest with you, I remember the seventy-five thousand, I don't remember the completing. I don't, but I don't remember the figure that was used to complete it.
Gabe, you remember that?
I remember, I talked about outside sources.
Okay, 'cause what I was getting at, to me, and it kinda, it's, you know, I'm very pro park, but it's like, okay, we got seventy-five thousand dollars for the building, then we're gonna come back and get sixty-two, and to me, it's like, I'm gonna have a guy redoing my kitchen, he's gonna charge me ten thousand. Then he comes back and says, well, it's gonna be eight thousand more. I mean, that's just me.
I understand, I'm not so sure that was what I heard, though, Tom, I can't remember.
The two maintenance guys worked hard, and I.
Tom, I, I asked Julie today, and we can get the minutes out if you want, the, the whole idea was, it was the hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And in essence, we agreed we would put seventy-five in it now, wait till next year, see how far along we were.
Well, I was talking about.
And we hope to have.
I understand, I understand about the meeting, but wait a minute, now, wait a minute.
Okay, you had a different meeting.
Well, I'm talking about at a board of public works meeting, in fact, David Jobe's saying he's just down on the table, that's what I'm talking about.
I just know why I said city council meeting.
Julie, can you bring any life to this?
I don't remember about the board of works meeting, I honestly don't.
I'm sorry, it wasn't the board of public works meeting, it was executive session.
Executive session.
That we're not supposed to talk about.
And that, that may have been, yeah.
I think you're right, yeah, yeah, I just don't remember.
I mean, it's fine, if everybody don't remember, they don't remember. That's fine. I think we need to vote.
Was there any mention of the county bringing any money?
Well, it's a, it's a city.
Well, if we don't do something, if we, we just use it the way it is?
No, it'll be bored out.
Well, I'm just, you know, I mean.
We don't have any restrooms in it right now.
So if you do nothing, basically threw seventy-five thousand down the toilet. Yes.
Could we?
I think that's what, probably what Tom is upset about is that.
No, I tell you that during this meeting, what this guy.
I think we said seventy-five thousand with the hopes that, as Connie brought out, the public would come forth with some pretty good sized donations, and that would help us complete the building at one fifty-nine, but.
Yeah, but the way it stands, we're almost totally funding it.
We're at this point where.
Yeah, there are competitions by the tenor too. So we have dread competition by the tenor fundraising too.
So could we have a usable building for less than sixty-two thousand? I mean.
I'll, I'll be honest with you, I, I asked Mike to study this.
We can look at the landscaping, the sidewalks, paving, there's, there's twelve thousand dollars.
We wouldn't have to finish the stage area, probably.
I'm, I'm just coming up with, to make it more.
I'll tell you folks something, every day, five days a week, I meet Mike at the Robert's Building, Robert's Building, whatever you call it. We do the engineering day at a time. We have scoured, we have found used doors, used everything, we have shopped for used kitchen equipment. It's a piece of pride in this city that will be there when all of us are gone. And to sit here and cribble around sixty-one thousand dollars, I figured it today, it's a one-time taxpayer, and it's not coming from the taxpayer, about nine dollars per taxpayer. At figuring it at thirteen thousand, eight hundred people, it's about nine dollars each, one time. Now, if you wanna divide that up over nine years, it's a dollar. To put a building like that, that is the commemorative building of the park back in there. And I guess at this point, I have worked my tail off to try to do it, we have no city engineer. I've run all over the country finding things, we've jeweled people down, we got things done for practically nothing at times. And if you wanna quit tonight, we'll leave it boarded up, and we, and I think you'll take a raft from the citizens. I think the council will take a raft, not threatening it.
It's something we can't do, I mean, it's, you can't, can't.
I think it's something that you voted to do, you could've voted to tear the thing down. That's when it should've been torn down, before we started.
At the time we voted, we didn't vote for a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
That's fine, Nancy, do you get any calls on it?
I'm sorry?
Did you, do you get any calls on it?
No.
Nobody's in favor or against it?
No, no one's called me regarding this.
Well, I need permission to advertise for a public hearing to take this money off of the riverboat. You could take it out of the general fund, but I think it's too early in the year to do it.
Can I ask you another question, Mike?
Yes.
If, if the need is so great, if you have it rented out, I don't know what the rates are at the Miller building, but if you would book it solid, does it, I mean, it pays for itself, it pays for utilities, how much net would you?
It should pay for itself, utilities, and maybe a part-time maintenance guy to clean it. Kind of like Miller Center does.
So you'd have, you'd have to add an additional employee, part-time?
I got a guy to go over and clean it, the guy that cleans.
Oh, okay.
So it's not gonna require any more?
The only thing we'd require more is, we just wouldn't hand keys over to somebody, we would do, do what we do at the Miller Center, have some of them staff to go over to the vent and supervise, like we do now with the Miller Center. And we might be lucky where both of them's rented at the same time, the same person would supervise both buildings, it's going back and forth.
I guess, to make it real clear, no additional monies will be needed, we think, to run it and to keep it going.
Well, have to, Gary, because you're gonna have more heat, and like, which, you know, we, we need that.
Yeah, that's why I said utilities, it's gonna pay for.
Other than maybe a few part-time hours to supervise, unless you want me to hand the keys over to somebody, let them go in there.
No.
That's been the problem, park buildings.
We have twenty-one thousand in the rainy day fund, is that available for something like this?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We have to take that and put it back in the general fund, that has to sit there for a certain period of time, and then it has to go into the general fund.
Okay.
But it's not been in there, it's not in there now?
Rainy day fund, that money usually has to go back into the general.
Okay.
Down, down the road, down the road, there's some money, a large amount of money, that's gonna come to the city to be spent only in Robert's Park. It's down the road, I, I can't tell you the number of years, it could be four, it could be eight, probably less than ten.
How old was about ten?
Ten, there's gonna be a big sum of money come to the park. I'm not afraid of this.
You're saying ten thousand?
No, no, a lot of money.
Oh, I said, what are you talking about, ten, years, years, years.
It could be two, four, six, eight, ten, right now, we're receiving interest off of this fund. To me, I think the building should be completed, it should be an honor to the people, and you folks ought to be proud that you had the foresight to keep it and restore it. But you get to vote, I don't. So if someone wants to make a motion, one way or the other.
I'll make a motion that we approve of using riverboat money fund to finance completion of the James Roberts Building Project.
Is there a second?
Reluctantly second it.
We have a second motion. Any further discussion, anybody in the audience wanna discuss it?
Can I say something, Mayor?
Well, sure, you're a citizen.
You know, at first, I thought that the thing probably should've been tore down, you stuck seventy-five thousand dollars in this building. To restore this building, you got this centennial coming up and everything else, and at first, the first quote was, it's gonna be a hundred and what thousand dollars? A hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, whatever, and now you have seventy-five, and you knew you were gonna come back and look at it again, and now you don't know if you wanna do it or not? You know, I think it's nothing but a benefit here, it really is, I mean, you know, what's the point in the first place? Like the mayor said, if you didn't want it to do it in the first place, then you should've tore it down, made a skating park out of it or something, but you put this much money in it, you need to go on with it and not just let it go to pot, 'cause the more the building, like Fran said, the more you let it sit there, it's gonna deteriorate, and seventy-five thousand dollars after two or three years is gonna go down the toilet. Then you decide to go do it, you're gonna spend twice as much to get it back where it is now. So I have to say, I think it's, I think it's time just to, to get it all done, and get it, get it, let's go, let's do it.
Counselor, I hope your department doesn't need money down the road.
Well, I'll tell you what, we've been doing, we've been striving and everything else, but we also have some more riverboat money coming down the road. And I think sitting here waiting another six, eight months, even a year, you know, for equipment, I mean, we've been doing a long time without it, Nancy. And, yeah, we need to upgrade a lot of things in this city, but, you know, at this point here, I don't think you really have a choice, I think you need to finish it up, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say to this council, this administration, myself and Julie, and you folks many times, we have saved tons and tons of money on refinancing, on doing things and getting things done very, I don't wanna use the word cheaply, inexpensive, because we've gone out and fought for. There's some things I can't tell you sitting here in the public, because it's private, that has to be kept private, because there's certain families that have either given or done. And I sit here, and I can't say anything, and it really hurts me. But I wanna tell you something, that building will be a star in your town eventually. And the only thing I'm sorry about is all the time I've spent. And I have spent tons and tons of time up there, traveling this, Mike, trying to find things that fit the decor so that the building looks like it did originally, and to complete it. I had the former mayor here, and I don't think he would mind if he said, he came this summer, Maury Connel, and I took him out to lunch, which I do each year when he comes back from California. And I said, Maury, I'd like to show you the Robert's John Roberts Building before I take you back home. Okay, so I took him in, and at that time, there wasn't a drywall in, and he said, what, what did you do to this building? And I said, we stripped it out, we took everything out of it, he said, well, you know, he said, I was the one that closed this building. I said, I didn't know that, Maury, but, I said, why did you close it? He says, because the park board told me that the roof was caving in, and the floor was caving in, and it was unsafe for people to be in it. And I said, well, Maury, we haven't done a thing to the ceiling, it was stripped out, it has two-by-twelve yellow pine joices, sixteen inch on center, trussed. In the floor, it has two-by-twelve yellow pine, sixteen inch on center, joices, cribbed, if you know what that means. You do, you're in that business. It is a building that is built that will never come down, unless it burns down. It is probably the, one of the best built buildings in this town, a port foundation. A good roof. It, it, it has antique woodwork, I mean, it is a beautiful building. It is a hundred and forty-two feet long and forty-two feet wide, solid hardwood maple floor, three-quarters of an inch thick. On top of a subfloor laid on an angle on top of those yellow pine joices. I mean, you're talking about a building that has a beautiful dance floor, has a beautiful stage, and now is totally wired with mood lights and, I mean, and, and there again, we took the price of the lights from eighteen thousand to, to where? From eighteen thousand down to where?
Three, twenty-five hundred, something like that.
Yeah, the first bid was eighteen thousand. But we're not gonna sit here all night, and I'm not gonna cry about it, if you guys don't wanna do it, we'll board the windows back up in the morning, and we'll move on. So we have a motion on the floor, we have a reluctant second?
Yep.
We have a good first?
Yes.
Well, Mayor, I think you got somebody who wants to say something.
Yes, sir, who wants to say?
We don't look like brothers, no change, right? I've been in the building numerous times, and I know I've made comments, and I've made them about the fire department and so forth, just trying to hold somebody's feet to the fire and getting the job done in a timely, less expensive way. I've done that several times, and I know I've upset people for doing that, but just trying to bring some credibility to, to the departments, and I was on the other side of that table that you're on. But with going there and seeing the miles of wire and, and, and all the drywall dust and all the stuff that the people worked through, and the insulation that was put in, they've done a remarkable job to the old building. There is some flaws, there was some flaws, but they're being taken care of, in time, the building is, is ready to be used, it'll be, be a fit building for, for everyone. I was amazed at, back three years ago, when we went, went the first time, I thought, no, no. But I think the mayor and, and others, and John, and, and. What's the other guy?
Really, I mean, it's bad.
Yeah, I've had a lot of building the last week, but anyway, I think they've done a real good job. The drywall, the, the price of doing the drywall and stuff, they brought the price down from what the original estimates were to do the drywall. And that's a long way up there to be putting, hanging drywall all day long, and they got it done for this, and one price was like three thousand dollars, or I forget exactly, exactly what it was off the half, off the top, but they did a real good job. But it's to the point now where we can't, we can't turn our back on the old girl, 'cause she's up there and she's ready to be used, not too far off, so. I would appreciate the, the council to, to go ahead with the project, and I appreciate anything you can do for us.
Okay.
And by the way, I get to, and I don't, and right now, my dump trucks are good, I need a little salt, but I don't need dump trucks.
We have a motion on the floor, and we'll have a real call vote.
Sorry, Gabe.
I have to ask first.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
I'm not comfortable voting on this, 'cause I haven't heard what was said before, and I'm really uncomfortable voting at all.
One abstain?
Yes, please.
Councilman Creach?
No.
Councilwoman Stevens?
No.
Councilwoman Rish?
No.
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chomol?
Yes.
Three to three and one abstention. An abstention usually goes with majority, but there is no majority in this case.
It is three to three and one abstention.
Right, Don?
You're right, it goes, abstention goes with majority, but in this case, there is no majority.
So is the vote in happening?
So there's no race.
Can I say something real quick?
Does the mayor vote on that?
I think the mayor breaks the tie.
The mayor breaks the tie.
Yes, the mayor breaks the tie.
I vote yes. O'Shea Carey?
Can I ask something? I do remember the one fifty-nine, and so, but I don't know what all the, you know, we, we were hoping that was high, I, I do remember that. But on the, so on the same token, if it's a hundred and thirty-six, which is these two together, then, then, then you've done well, which I think you have.
Right, we're trying.
So, but I, I really think that, I don't think they were pipe dreams, I think they were almost promises that people, groups, would come through with some money. I mean, it wasn't just, you know, real hopes, but is there, would there be a, a benefit of seeing if, like, organizations, Rotary, Lions, et cetera, optimists, would there be any, could you give them free rental, free meeting space for donations? I mean, I don't know. Would there be any kind of?
Connie, over the years, the Lions Club has put, I personally have owned for forty years, the Lions Club has put thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars into park. We put the roof on the amphitheater, put new lighting in the park, we rebuilt the benches and the amphitheater, thousands. And when the Lions Club uses the park, they pay the same fee that's any club or any organization that has never paid a penny into the park, pay. The border works has a pause that everybody pays the same, regardless of what you donate. The Lions Club has been big brother about it, they say, yeah, we understand that, and they've done it. Now, I'm not here to say there's other groups that have put money into the park. The park is the only thing that you really give your people. I mean, protecting your people with the police is very important, but they expect it, and it's not something they enjoy. Picking up their trash, they pay for. But you give them the parks to use. Now, we charge a small fee, but we have three problems that, that come in there, and we got one now that's crowded out because we can't, we can't accommodate it. We're gonna put that one in this building. I, I wish I could, I could convey to you what that building will mean to this community as we move forward through the bicentennial, and people go ooh and ah about the way it looks. And since we've depleted this tonight, I've asked John Pausing, what meeting, John, what meeting are we?
Second February.
Second meeting in February, we will meet in the Robert's Building and have our city council meeting, so that you can see everything that's done. And he will be able to broadcast it live, because we now have the tower up there that we can beam the signal back to the studio. It's, you can't look at that building and the use of it, or the city of Connersville today. You've gotta look way down the road, and it's kinda like when you're learning to drive, you aim high in driving, you look way down to the next curve. And I know I was on this council for four years, it's hard to do sometimes. And I wanna tell you, I think you're doing the right thing to do that building. It deserves to be a part of the park system for future generations, it really does. And I have skimped and saved, you can ask the clerk treasurer, we don't pay full price for anything, do we?
It's almost embarrassing.
We'll continue doing that for this next phase. We'll continue doing that for this next phase, I mean, we're trying to expand to...
I'm hoping we don't have to spend this hundred, sixty-one thousand dollars, but we, we wanted to be as accurate as we could, and I can guarantee you one thing, I will not ask you for one more penny for that building. Nancy, you can look at me like that, but I won't.
That's a promise.
That's a promise, but I want to tell you something, your constituents in District Five will be very happy that you completed it, they will, because we have your constituents in there constantly, walking and coming in.
I'm not saying, Mayor, that I don't want the building fixed up, I'm just concerned about things that are gonna come up, and if we do this, we're gonna take a hundred and forty-six thousand down, two eighty-four something, and I'm sure Julie has money coming out of that yet, we don't get our money for the rip from the Riverboat till like August, and I'm just afraid we're gonna have some things come up we can't pay for.
Do you know, Nancy, and I can, those cities that get Riverboat money mostly spend it all that year, they don't save it at all, now, we, we, and I say we, 'cause I'm talking with Julie, and I work here every day, we know where we stand financially, and believe me, a city our size, with the unemployment we've suffered and the way we've been, we are in good financial condition, and I will be giving a report on the state of the city on the seventeenth, and I can tell you, we are sound, there's no danger of less going broke. Today, we went over the utilities, uh, I asked four years ago to start putting money back for equipment, today, we have the money to pay for the equipment, but we just gave a contract today for two hundred and what, sixty-four thousand, no, two forty...
Two hundred and twelve thousand.
Two hundred and twelve thousand, to put all new motors in the pumps at the, at the station down there where the disposal plant, yeah. We are in financial condition, we're not wonderful, we're not rich, like maybe Carmen, but for the size of our town, we can afford to pay our police, we can afford to pay for our trash, we can afford to move forward, just tonight alone, in utilities, we made a agreement that's gonna save a half million dollars over the next ten years, just tonight alone.
Can we move on?
Yes.
Well, I just want to say one thing, I mean, I was listening to everything, I mean, after listening to everything, I, I, I mean, I would be almost embarrassed during the bicentennial, go down to, people coming here, and people know we're working on the building, and then we board it up? And we were part of it, I, I, I would stay at home, I'd stay at home, I'm sorry, but I would, I mean, that's embarrassing. No, no, I'm not done, I mean, you know, I'll move on when it's time to move on, but I mean, we're not done, and I'm just telling you, that's embarrassing, no, no, I'm done with that.
Do we have anything on the public forum, and anybody like to speak?
Yeah, let's go.
You'd like to speak? You've already spoke twice.
I would, I would like to take the opportunity that, during our crisis with the snow and the trash and everything that's been going on, I would like to thank Mike and the Parks Department for their employees and all the help that they give the Street Department, I think they did a real fine job, and I really appreciate what the Parks did for, for the Street Department, and I think we all got along and worked well together, so, I just, when Mike was here, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that how much I appreciate what they have helped us do.
And what are you saying, as the night the snow hit, we called the Parks Department in to help us with their snow blow truck, we got the skid steer from the utilities, I think one of the Parks people cleaned the sidewalks, everybody pulled together and worked that night, and Thursday at four o'clock, you could drive up and down any street in this town, I don't know how many of you are here, how many were gone for Christmas.
You're helping with the trash and the sidewalk.
Yeah. That's what I like to see, where the departments work together and help each other. Okay, um, and nothing on the public forum, nobody wants to speak other than... Ms. Laney's business, Nancy, you have anything?
No.
Mr. Creach?
I'm good.
Thank you. And, Ms. Montgomery?
No.
And, Gabe?
I just want to say the Street and Parks Department did, did a great job during the blizzard, they did a real good job, I was out that afternoon, and it was, it was nice, you drive.
Fran, did you have anything?
No, I'm fine, thanks.
Gary?
Well, I would just like to compliment Ruby and, uh, Mr. Jobe and the front page thing, it looked really good, it looked like it wasn't staged.
Well, she said, she said she had breakfast, right?
It was good, it was good.
Connie, did you have anything?
I do not.
And Mr. Baker, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. On the mayor's report, I guess I don't have much to tell you. On the clerk treasurer's report, you got that report before you, any questions on it?
I will accept the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
First time we've ever done it, that's nice. I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.